You're fine, you're fine. You're fine, you're bad man.
Let's call this meeting to order.
Alright.
I would like to ask Councilman Tim Jacobs to read us in the pledge, and I would like to ask Councilwoman Barbara Alfred to give us a prayer.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's correct. Return of God, we come to see the Lord to say thank you. We come, God, thanking you, God, that there is liberty and justice for all. We come, God, asking that you will teach us how to be one nation, indivisible, loving you, God. We come thanking you for the opportunity to serve you and your people. We ask now, God, that you dwell among us, that you will guide us as we go forth into these proceedings, that you will teach us your way as we go along. We thank you for this council, God, for we know that in this season, God, you are doing a new thing, but heaven to be a righteous thing, God, if we like to use you. Lord, we give you all the glory, the honor, and the praise. We ask that you bless our mayor as he leads this city forward. We ask that you bless us as representatives of these young people. Now, God, we thank you for all who have gathered here, and we pray, God, that everything that we do will be pleasing in your sight. In Jesus's name we praise him, amen.
Alright, so this time I would like to ask the City Council to step forward and administer the oath of office, and also Ms. Kelly Wilkes to step forward to administer the oath of office to her sister.
We will start with the mayor, and then we will go down the line. If y'all want to come. Well, yeah, raise your right hand. There you go. That's not going to help me picture it. I, Adam Milton.
I, Adam Milton.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of Alabama.
and the Constitution of Alabama.
so long as I continue a citizen thereof.
so long as I continue a citizen thereof.
and that I will faithfully and honestly.
and that I will faithfully and honestly.
discharge the duties of the office of mayor.
discharge the duties of the office of mayor.
upon which I am about to enter.
upon which I am about to enter.
to the best of my ability.
to the best of my ability.
so help me God.
so help me God.
I, Tammy Holly.
I, Tammy Holly.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of Alabama.
and the Constitution of Alabama.
so long as I continue a citizen thereof.
so long as I continue a citizen thereof.
and that I will faithfully and honestly.
and that I will faithfully and honestly.
discharge the duties.
discharge the duties.
of the office of councilmember District One.
of the office of councilmember District One.
upon which I am about to enter.
upon which I am about to enter.
to the best of my ability.
to the best of my ability.
so help me God.
so help me God.
Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Johnny Wilks Henderson.
I, Johnny Wilks Henderson.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of Alabama.
and the Constitution of Alabama.
so long as I continue a citizen thereof.
so long as I continue a citizen thereof.
and that I will faithfully.
and that I will faithfully.
and honestly.
and honestly.
discharge the duties of the office of councilmember.
discharge the duties of the office of the councilmember.
District Number Two.
District Number Two.
upon which I am about to enter.
upon which I am about to enter.
to the best of my ability.
to the best of my ability.
so help me God.
so help me God.
I, Timothy Jacobs.
I, Timothy Jacobs.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of Alabama.
and the Constitution of Alabama.
so long as I continue a citizen thereof.
so long as I continue a citizen thereof.
and that I will faithfully and honestly.
that I will faithfully and honestly.
discharge the duties of the office of councilmember District Three.
discharge the duties of the office of councilmember of District Three.
upon which I am about to enter.
on which of them I am about to enter.
to the best of my ability.
to the best of my ability.
so help me God.
so help me God.
I, Barbara Alfred.
I, Barbara Alfred. solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of Alabama.
and the Constitution of Alabama.
so long as I continue a citizen thereof.
so long as I continue a citizen thereof.
and that I will faithfully and honestly.
and that I will faithfully and honestly.
discharge the duties of the office of councilmember District Four.
discharge the duties of the office of councilmember District Four.
upon which I am about to enter.
upon which I am about to enter.
to the best of my ability.
to the best of my ability.
so help me God.
so help me God.
I, Weedy Delshaw.
I.
Weedy Delshaw. solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of Alabama.
and the Constitution of Alabama.
so long as I continue a citizen thereof.
so long as I continue a citizen thereof.
and that I will faithfully and honestly.
then I will faithfully and honestly.
discharge the duties of office of councilmember District Five.
discharge the duties of the office of councilmember District Five.
upon which I am about to enter.
upon which I am about to enter.
to the best of my ability.
to the best of my ability.
so help me God.
so help me God.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I present to you the City Council of the City of Roanoke. Now, moving on, the next thing on the agenda looks like, has everybody had an opportunity to look at the minutes from the October the twentieth council meeting? Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes from the October twentieth meeting?
Yes, Mayor, I believe that we will approve the minutes from the October twentieth meeting.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion, maybe. All in favor, and I believe we need a roll call vote.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Milton?
Yes.
Councilmember Alfred?
Yes.
Councilmember Delshaw?
Yes.
The minutes stand approved. The next thing we need to do would be to look at ordinance twenty twenty-five eleven oh three, establishing, excuse me, establishing the council meeting procedures. And if everybody had a chance to look at that resolution. Does anybody have any, we need some discussion about this as far as the council meeting is continuing on the first and the third Mondays at six o'clock P.M.? Or does anybody prefer a change, or is that suitable? Is everybody good with that? Do I have a motion to accept ordinance eleven oh three?
First, it would be a motion to suspend the rules because this is the first reading of it.
That's correct. Do I have a motion to suspend the rules for the first reading?
Motion to suspend the rules for the first reading?
Alright, all in favor, roll call vote. Oh, excuse me, I gotta have a second. Do I have a second?
I second it, yes.
Alright, all in favor, roll call vote.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Milton?
Yes.
Councilmember Alfred?
Yes.
Councilmember Delshaw?
Yes.
Alright, the next item of business will be to elect a mayor pro temp. Oh, I'm sorry, we gotta go back, that's right. I, y'all, I knew it. Do I have a motion to accept ordinance eleven oh three?
I'll make the motion now.
Do I have a second? Alright, all in favor, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Milton?
Yes.
Councilmember Alfred?
Yes.
Councilmember Delshaw?
Yes.
I think we're through with that one, right? Alright, now, we're gonna move on to elect a mayor pro temp. Do I have... Do I have a motion to nominate anybody for mayor pro temp?
Mayor, I would like to nominate Ms. Tammy Holly.
I'll second that motion.
Alright, all in favor, roll call vote.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Milton?
Yes.
Councilmember Alfred?
Yes.
Councilmember Delshaw?
Yes.
Alright, now, we need to do this resolution, correct?
So, this will be Resolution thirteen ninety. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Roanoke, Alabama, appointing a mayor pro temp four. Whereas eleven forty-three forty-nine, Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five, authorizes the City Council of Municipalities in the State of Alabama to elect one of its members to act as mayor pro temp four, and whereas it is necessary and proper for the City Council of the City of Roanoke, Alabama, to appoint mayor pro temp four to act in the absence or disability of the mayor. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Roanoke, Alabama, as follows: That councilmember Tammy Holly is hereby elected and appointed to serve as mayor pro temp four of the City of Roanoke, Alabama. The mayor pro temp shall perform the duties of the mayor during the absence or disability of the mayor, and shall have all rights, powers, and duties of the office of mayor while acting in such capacity as provided by law.
Do I have a motion to accept Resolution thirteen, excuse me, thirteen ninety?
Motion to accept Resolution thirteen ninety.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
All in favor, roll call vote.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Milton?
Yes.
Councilmember Alfred?
Yes.
Councilmember Delshaw?
Yes.
Alright, the next item up here would be establishing the depositories for the City of Roanoke.
This is Resolution thirteen eighty-nine, designation of First Bank of Alabama and First Bank as the depositories for municipal funds into assigned signatories. Whereas the City Council of the City of Roanoke designates First Bank of Alabama and First Bank as the depositories for Roanoke municipal funds, and whereas the City Council of the City of Roanoke designate certain city officials who will be authorized to execute financial documents on behalf of the city, they are as follows: Mayor Adam Milton, Mayor Pro Temp, Councilmember Tammy Holly, City Clerk, Treasurer Amanda Davis.
Do I have a motion to accept Resolution thirteen eighty-nine?
I believe that we will accept Resolution thirteen eighty-nine for depositories at First Bank of Alabama and First Bank.
Do I have a second? All in favor, roll call vote.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Milton?
Yes.
Councilmember Alfred?
Yes.
Councilmember Delshaw?
Yes.
Alright, the next item up would be Resolution thirteen ninety-two, appointing a city attorney for the city. I would like to ask that we reappoint Clay Tenny as the city attorney. Do I have a motion for that?
I'll make that motion to appoint Clay Tenny as a continuing city attorney.
Do I have a second? All in favor, roll call vote.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Milton?
Yes.
Councilmember Alfred?
Yes.
Councilmember Delshaw?
Yes.
So, Resolution thirteen ninety-two is a resolution appointing the city attorney for the City of Roanoke, Alabama. Be it resolved by the mayor and city council of the City of Roanoke, Alabama, as follows: That Clay Tenny is hereby appointed as city attorney for the City of Roanoke, Alabama, and that said appointment shall be effective November third, twenty twenty-five.
Alright, we ready to move on to the next. The next one is involving the appointment of an interim police chief. As some of you are aware, Chief Caldwell retired, and I do feel like that the police department needs someone to answer to, and that can give direction to the police department. So, at this time, I would like for you to consider appointing the senior officer, Bernard Dean, over thirty years of experience, to that position of interim police chief. Do I have a motion to accept that?
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion that we accept Mr. Dean as the interim police chief.
Do I have a second? All in favor, roll call vote.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Milton?
Yes.
Councilmember Alfred?
Yes.
Councilmember Delshaw?
Yes.
May I add something to that, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
With us appointing Lieutenant Dean to interim police chief comes more duties.
I'm sorry.
May we add some monetary whatever to this hour to pay?
Yes, actually, I forgot to bring that up, I apologize. I would like to ask the council to increase Lieutenant Dean's salary five dollars per hour during this interim. Do I have a motion to accept that five dollar an hour increase?
Motion to accept the five dollar.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, roll call vote.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Milton?
Yes.
Councilmember Alfred?
Yes.
Councilmember Delshaw?
Yes.
Alright, the next item up on our agenda is the appointment of all other positions. I would like to ask this council to stay all appointments for ninety days. That includes the, of course, we're taking applications. We will be for the police chief, the fire chief, the city clerk, the city prosecutor, and the city judge for ninety days. The reason for that is it gives us an opportunity for them to get to know us, and for us to get to know them. They may decide that they are not happy with us, and they may decide that they don't want work for us. To me, that is fair, and we open up the application process for these positions, the people that are in it. Or I encourage them to reapply, but I just feel like that is fair. Is there any discussion on that? Did y'all would like to talk about it?
I think it's a wonderful, great idea. We have lost the plane today. We just haven't had the same opportunity. I agree.
Alright, do I have a motion to stay those appointments for ninety days and take applications, pass those?
Motion to stay all appointments for ninety days and take applications.
Do I have a second? I do, second. Alright, all in favor, roll call vote.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Milton?
Yes.
Councilmember Alfred?
Yes.
Councilmember Delshaw?
Yes.
Alright. Did we have a resolution on that, or we just gonna wait? Okay, alright. The next item on the agenda is the Christmas parade and the skating rink. I'm gonna divide this. Let's talk about the Christmas parade part. Does anybody have any dates and times in mind for the Christmas parade?
Can, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Do we know when the other parades are in the can, what day? I've had people calling and asking us because Rock Mill's plans theirs for the same day that we do. I know in years past, it was the second Saturday, and then for the past few years, it's been the first Saturday, so I didn't know which one or which ways y'all wanna go.
Could we open this up in this, our chamber? For some, what is going on in the rest of the county as far as?
As far as, I know, everybody's kind of had rolling up the first Saturday.
Okay. Okay.
Or Friday in chamber, usually Saturday.
Is, how, how do y'all feel about a Friday? Is that not good, good?
Football.
Oh, okay.
With that, yeah.
Playoffs, it's clearly into that.
Is that the only reason we haven't done it on a Friday is because of the, the, um?
Usually get a better participation on Saturday, and people have enjoyed it in that later when the lights look pretty.
So, what, what is that first Saturday?
And if you go ahead and say it, then everybody else will, it'll be, it'll be set for us.
And before we adopt this time, then weekdays are not good, like Thursday, is that not good?
Yeah, school should work in, if they have people working, it's kinda tough.
I'm just trying to think for our small business, um, cause usually, you know, we have Black Friday on the twenty-eighth, um, after Thanksgiving, and I don't know if we're, in order to help them to get their season. So, that, six, I guess, that motion.
You making that motion for a second?
Making the motion.
What about a time?
Uh, it gets dark now earlier, so it's five o'clock too early on a Friday. I mean, Saturday.
Isn't that, isn't that what we did last year, another? I think we started, I started lining up about three-thirty.
So, my motion is for the Christmas parade, the city Christmas parade to be on Saturday, December the sixth at five o'clock.
Do I have a second? All in favor for December the, we said sixth, can't read the rule, at five o'clock P. M.? All right, roll call vote?
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Milton?
Yes.
Councilmember Alfred?
Yes.
Councilmember Delshaw?
Yes.
All right, uh, the next item on here is the skating rink. Um, I, I talked to the city clerk today, I, I had a question. First off, I wanted to know, did the city own the skating rink? And that response is yes, the city owns the skating rink. My second question was, do we charge for using the skating rink? And of course, the city clerk, she explained to me about that. I'm gonna ask y'all that we waive the charges that have been being charged to the public to use the skating rink. The city funds, this is my opinion, and my opinion, opinion only, but the city funds were used to purchase it?
Oh, it was donations that were used to purchase it, not some funds, I'm sorry.
Well, it was, uh, donated to the city where, uh, you know, it's here, and I think it's a great thing, but I think it ought to be open and free to our kids that come out and use it. Some people, I don't think could really afford it. Um, let's hear some discussion about that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The skating rink, the skating rink down on four thirty-one? On this block out here, so? Okay. Down in town with the lights? Okay, so I'm sixty-five, the skating rink was down there.
Yes, that's, that's roller, that's ice.
Okay, thank.
I can't hear no other one.
I just wanna be clear, was, am I on the one?
No, I'm on.
Okay, thank you. That's okay.
My discussion would be, does the city, um, have enough funds, that pile that's used out there? Is that some of what was being charged, you know, to skate?
No, the funds that were, um, used from that, that's what we do, the, um, like, Makeham Main, all the candy and stuff that the city buys to give out to the kids, all of that's in the Main Street fund. And then we did, um, what did we do? We had an Easter thing downtown one year, and we did a, um, kidpreneur event downtown, like, just it helped sponsor those things.
Okay, without charging, we just, or say, okay, city, well, yes, we're not charging, or still have to be assigned, like, that this is not responsible, and I think it's been up there.
Oh, yes, we have.
Okay. Uh, would we still be able to do those things without charging?
I believe.
Is there money?
There's four thousand in the account right now after we just did all this with, um, Makeham.
Okay. And how much does it cost to do Makeham, cause that's?
Um, about fifteen hundred is what we spent, but, um, two hundred was donated from Walmart.
Okay, okay.
Any more discussion?
Well, I don't have one more, sorry. Um, that would, if it was just opened up to the public, skate at your own, whenever, um, would somebody have to be down there to man it because of the skates?
Yes.
And that's all volunteer hours, is that correct?
Yes.
So, that means every council member up here needs some donation hours.
Uh, a couple of years, um, the school has helped us, like, the Interact Club did it one year, and then the ambassadors did it last year. But, yes, it's all completely volunteers.
Okay. That was all the questions.
Any more discussion? Do I have a motion to drop the fee that people are having to pay to use?
Motion to drop the fee, delete, that's it.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, roll call vote?
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Milton?
Yes.
Councilmember Alfred?
Yes.
Councilmember Delshaw?
Yes.
All right, moving along.
Well, we don't have a date yet.
Uh, it typically opens on the day of the Christmas parade, which would be the first Saturday.
So, it all goes to end.
All right, um, the next item is incentive pay for the city employees. What, what, what has the city been doing?
Um, in years past, it was a hundred and fifty for full-time employees, a hundred for part-time, a hundred and fifty for firefighters, and a hundred for police reserves. Is what has been done in the past.
Um, any discussion?
Incentive pay, uh, I'm new at this, so why?
Well, you can't give Christmas bonuses.
Gotcha.
You know, so, the, the city does, like, an incentive pay for the?
Once a year, a city, okay. And that's given typically in, end of November, first of December.
Um, any more discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Yes.
I believe that we would give a hundred and fifty dollars for each full-time employee, one hundred dollars for each part-time employee, one hundred fifty dollars for firefighters, and one hundred dollars for police reserves, incentive pay.
Do I have a second? All in favor, roll call vote?
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Milton?
Yes.
Councilmember Alfred?
Yes.
Councilmember Delshaw?
Yes.
And that pretty well gets rid of all the new business, um, the mayor's report, just, uh, I think that got rid of all the new business, right? All right, on the mayor's report, just to let all y'all know, that, uh, I plan to be meeting with all of the city employees, uh, this week, here at City Hall, and just so you know, I plan to be at City Hall all week long. Um, if anybody needs me, please come, my door is open. Uh, you don't need to call, make an appointment, just show up. And I'll do the best I can to, uh, do whatever I can to answer your questions. Um, I plan to be reviewing the budget, city's policies, any contracts we have, and lord knows many other things. Um, our city clerk is gonna be tired of me by the time of this week, if I, if I do that. Um, the next thing is Saturday, I wanna remind everybody that there is a Veterans Day parade here. Please come out and support our veterans. Um, they will begin lining up, I think, at ten o'clock at Hanley High School. And, um, if you can, please come out and show, we need to show them our support.
What time is the parade, Mayor?
I think it's gonna leave over there around eleven, um, and come down Main Street and back around, so, um, our interim chief will take care of all of our traffic situation, help him any way that he can. Now, the, the next thing is, as we all know, there is, I, I kinda did a little research, I've been watching the news, um, as all of you are aware, um, there is gonna be a shortage on the supplemental nutrition assistance program. It's at least gonna be delayed, if any of you have been following the news. I did a little research on this, and I was, I was a little bit shocked. There is five thousand and seventy-five people in Randolph County that receive SNAP benefits. That is almost a quarter of the population of this county. So, people are gonna be in dire need. I know Ms. Kelly, um, over across the street, at Bridge and the Gap, I know they do some things, I think the Baptist Association does some things. We need to do anything that we can to help people that are in need. Um, I, I firmly believe that. I had an opportunity on Saturday, um, I talked to Bradley Bunsen, call me, if, if you're, if any of you know Bradley, Bradley is from here, professional football player. Now, and I think Jerry, I don't know if Jerry's here tonight, I don't know if I saw her, and I think she's?
She's here.
Okay, I think she has actually talked to him and given, give, uh, his foundation is okay. Um, and I told him that I would bring it up tonight, but on November the twelfth, at the RIC Center, there is going to be a food drive. And I encourage anybody that knows anybody that needs any assistance, um, use what we have available. I, Jerry, I, I was talking about that, and that's right, November the twelfth, correct? And I, I wrote it down, but I, I don't have a real good hand on it. Um, and, uh, if you have a neighbor or anything that's, that you think may be in need, if, if anything else, call up here and let us know. Um, I encourage all of our city employees to do everything that they can to, uh, help if they know, or if they hear of somebody that needs food, let us know up here. We'll do anything we can to help for as long as we can.
What time is it, or what, what are the hours?
I do not get the time.
Four thirty, she called me, she's, I'm sorry, four thirty.
Four thirty.
So, would this be like, um, food distribution, or?
Band is gonna pack the boxes, the bosoms are gonna provide the food, and they're just gonna drive through?
Like we did, have done in the past.
Yes, ma'am.
I think that's all I've got, now, I will say this, I don't, I think this will probably be the shortest council meeting that we'll have for quite a while, so just get ready for that. Um, the next thing on the list here is the council member reports, council member Holly, just one.
Um, just to piggyback on what you just said, I would like to personally thank the Bunsens for their, um, generous heart to, um, and their foundation for the food that they're going to distribute on November the twelfth. And also, uh, I would like to, I guess, repeal the resolution, so we can start picking up this trash around town?
Yeah, I, I wasn't sure if we could do that tonight, um, yes. We have a motion on the floor to repeal the resolution, or whatever it was, to, to start back picking up construction and debris, um, at no charge for the citizens.
I see.
All in favor, discussion, oh, excuse me, discussion, discussion. We may want to back up a little bit and get with Keith, Amanda, and Harmon Engineering, because I think we could have that landfill sale filled up very quickly. We've got, Keith, is Keith out there, can he come in here? Keith, we, we got a sale approved recently in, in our permitted area, but it's the last one we have in our permitted area, is that correct?
We actually, um, the last one that we had permitted is full.
Okay.
We had to go lay out a whole new spot.
In, in a per, in the current permitted area?
In the permitted area.
No, the current permitted area is full.
Okay.
But the one we're trying to get is in the three-year process. Yeah, a lady came about two weeks ago, she looked at the site, and it's out for public notice right now.
How big a, how big an area is that, do we know, I mean, should we know something?
It would be about five sales.
Okay, all right. Now, will these sales be dug, or we just gonna put it on top of the ground, or?
We try to dig, but I don't know what's under there. I've been told that there was some stuff from under there from years ago, and if we do go down and start to hit something, then we have to stop.
Right.
And then you're just basically back on top of the ground.
And then once, once these five cells are full, I mean, you can't, what, you gotta start a process long before then to get another area.
About three years, and that's making it.
Right, okay.
Get this one.
I just want, I just wanna be clear on that.
That's a question, we really don't have anywhere to put it. If you go to picking it up, we don't have anywhere to put it. I mean, the roll offs out there that we've been putting it in, and they all them off, but, you know, it'd just be more frequent.
All right, let, let me, I will, let me ask you a question. If we, if everybody that had debris to be picked up paid, would that be what we would do with it, is put it in the roll offs?
Yes.
And that's what we've been doing.
That's what we've been doing, that's almost.
And it probably like helps offset the costs.
So, if we do this resolution, in other words, we got the, we got the garbage and the debris, we gotta do something with it, we can't just leave it where it is. It is that, I'll tell you, that was probably the number two issue that the people in this town had when I was out going around, was the construction and debris. We have an obligation, in my opinion, to do something. Amen. Um, have you checked to see what other cities do? No, I, I can't say that I have, but I feel like that, I, I agree with Ms. Holly. Hey, look, we, we got an obligation to pick this stuff up.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So, to be clear, we're saying that there's nowhere to put the trash, or there's not enough room to put all the garbage, if the trucks pick it up, is that what we're saying?
We, have we got, have, have, have we ever got the, the final approval, approval from A M., so we can't start using those sales?
And then, once it comes out for public notice, then when it comes back, and there's not been any, anybody contested or whatever, they have to come back and decide again, before you can start to try to dig, and then you gotta try to dig, and once you get it done, they have to come back and inspect again.
Process.
Yes.
So, what's the, what, what length of time?
First, around the first weekend of December, uh, we should be done with the public notice, and then we can get started trying to do something. And it's just according to where we run into something, or we, you know, you keep digging or whatever. I would say, you're probably looking around, you're, uh, Christmas time, maybe a little after, according to how it goes.
May I speak, please?
Yes.
Number one, I never even mentioned a sale, I never mentioned a sale, I said, I said just start picking up garbage, I never mentioned anything about a sale, which I know it's been approved, because Alan Tucker was here to our last meeting, and said A M. had given it for.
Which I know it's been approved, because Alan Tucker was here to our last meeting, and said A M had given it approved. If we have to, we can put it in the roll-offs like we're doing right now. And if we have to be frequent about taking it wherever it goes, we just have to do that. We just need to clean it up, that's all I'm asking.
Yeah, agree.
When we talk about a sale, what, may, maybe.
There's no big piece where they dumped the garbage.
They do.
Okay.
But I never mentioned anything about a sale, I just wanna get cleaned up.
Mr. Mayor, can I speak?
Yes.
Can I ask a question? Um, and this might be a stupid question, but, no. Is there anywhere else, okay, so these roll-offs, I know they, we have to pay, and they're like five hundred dollars. Four hundred fifty, four fifty, okay. I know they're expensive, and that length of time, how long does it take to fill up one?
That's just going, how many people do you? You can, you can fill up one in half a day. You go picking it all up, and filling it up, then you go away, don't try to get it running up.
And where do they take, where do they go?
Uh, no, no.
Okay.
Nobody knows, here, this goes, I'm not sure where it goes, but I think it goes to a line landfill somewhere.
Okay.
Not just a C and D landfill, it's a line landfill, like a solid waste.
Okay. When we rent these dumpsters, is there an allotment amount of tons at four feet?
No, no, it's just, the only thing we get charged more is if it weighs more than two tons, four tons, something. A tonage is the only thing that makes the cost difference.
So, do we not have money in our current budget to get enough dumpsters till us pick up this garbage in the city?
There is a lot of lineups for that.
There is not a lineup. So, um, I guess we need to have discussion on, so the money that you were charging to be picked up, that was paying for the dump, strictly because there's not a lineup? Next question. There's no money anywhere to be found in our budget to rent these dumpsters to get.
Yeah, I mean, we had a, we had a twenty thousand dollar surplus, so.
All right. What do we need to do to use that twenty thousand dollar surplus to get runoff in a better situation with trash, get it off the streets?
Just a vote?
All right, a motion and a, a motion and a second.
And I've got a motion, thank you, from the, uh, Councilwoman Holly.
And I have a second from Councilmember Alfred.
Okay, I got a motion and a second.
Okay, so do we need a motion to spend that surplus, some of, an allotment amount? Just say five thousand dollars would get us, how many, ten? Do we ha- do you think? I know there's one tracking street, I've, I've been on these streets, campaigning.
He'll always be there. It ain't gonna be one time, son.
I know, but if we continuously get it up and move forward, and hopefully that sale gets approved and all this good, at least we've gotten rid of what's been out on the streets for the past three or four years, or whatever. Because I know there's a certain area in this town, people are struggling to put food on the table. And I know, growing up, with a mother that raised four by herself, ten dollars back then was a lot of money. I know it don't go far now, but it could be a kid's school lunch, it matters. I, if it's a motion, I say out of the surplus, let's allow five thousand dollars and get these roll-offs in here, and we're still, you know.
We can do two at a time.
We can do two at a time?
Right, we have two, two at a time, sitting there all the time.
Okay.
And one fills up, they come and get it, and then we bring it empty.
Okay.
And then we move it out like that.
So are the two that are currently sitting there now, are they full and full?
Yeah, one is completely full, they're supposed to come get it tomorrow, and the other one is a little over half.
Okay, so we'll get a clean one tomorrow. And then the one, the other one is half full, so when it's full, they'll come back, and we'll get a clean one, and I bet the other one will be full with time, so they can bring us two, probably at the same time. Let's keep it. Keep it going till we get all the. How, it's a start, and how soon can the city get out there and start? I don't know. I know y'all got projects going on.
We do.
But I say, if, you know, whoever doesn't have enough to do, or needs something to do, or however many it takes, y'all start, I don't care, 'cause after the times, if you go that way, first street, let's get it done. Because I'm like with Mr. Mayor, that is the main, one of the main concerns, I feel.
We try to rotate from C and D to L M, because there are way more L M's than you're seeing there. Start saying empty, and this week, we're gonna start on L M's, we got C and D actually. Y'all want C and D started this week, then that's up to y'all, but everybody's got L M's, it's gonna happen.
Let's wait on the L M's.
Let's wait on the L M's, they'll, they'll eventually, right.
And, and I've got to make things, Keith, Keith, he'll try to have all his people, and, uh, but let's see vote on this motion that we've got, all right?
I've got one more.
Yes.
I'm all for cleaning up the city, and I've seen the trash as, as much as anybody. And, and let's, let's face it, the, the taxpayers are the ones paying for this, whether it goes to the landfill or it goes in a dumpster, we, we don't have any money, it's all taxpayer money. I like to spend it wisely. What I, the problem we had before, and, and we had a lot of people from out of camp, we had a lot of illegal dumping. I think there's a lot of people that remember. Uh, and if it starts happening again, I just hope we can find a way to, uh, to control it.
Every other city charges, you announce, you're not on the charges, there are all kinds, I tell you that.
Yes, that's all I've got. We've got a very capable interim chief of police right there, and I'm sure he can get his, all of his people, on board with trying to help with that. And the other thing is, after we vote on this, if it, if it passes, get the code enforcement guys to start going around and have them separate out their household garbage paper, help keeping them any way that they can, to let's start getting this stuff picked up.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to, because all of us are basically new, I wanna ask that, the, the help and the support of the citizens. I see that all eyes are on us to help get the city cleaned up, but we're gonna ask that you all help us help you, and that you don't, that, that the garbage that's already there, let's get that cleaned up. So, I'm saying, don't run in here and just clean out everything and throw it in the pile, because you know. Because you know we're gonna try to clean up the city.
That's true.
So I'm asking that you all help us to help the city look good, and what's already out there, help us get that cleaned up.
Thank you, thank you.
And can I say something?
Yes.
Well, she said that, on that note, then, as citizens, if we see somebody that we know that will be dumping, report it.
Yes, please do, please do.
So we all working together.
Mm-hmm. All right, any more discussion?
Councilmember Holly, do you wanna add the five votes as an amendment to your motion?
You can.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alfred?
Yes.
Councilmember Duschel?
Yes.
Councilmember Holly, do you have anything?
I just wanna thank every last one of you for coming out tonight, being a part of this, uh, installation service for the newly elected officials and the current officials, and, um, we hope to not disappoint you and help try to move things forward. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Henderson?
I have nothing really, but like, that's what I'm saying, that I thank everybody that's here helping us, and we got to work together. You know, we wanna get it done, but we need everybody's help. Because we're only just six, but we need everybody's help, so I feel if we all pull together, we may run up what we wanted to be.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Jacobs?
I don't have anything to add, Mayor, but I just wanted to echo a little bit what everybody else is saying, I appreciate everybody coming out showing their support, and, uh, you know, that's what we're here for, we're here to serve the people and try to do the best we can.
That's right. Councilmember Alfred?
Thank you all so much for your support during the campaign and even now, and as we go forward, I've already said, it helps us to help you, and then we can all be proud together, thank you so much.
Is that all you, you got?
Page is over here.
I do wanna ask, because I did review the minutes, and I wanna ask what streets are left, uh, that need the striping?
I can send you that list, but I don't have it off the top of my head.
Okay, I wanna ask about the progress on Cannon Street in my district.
Uh, they are repairing the storm drains under there, and when they finish on Cannon, they will move to Mulberry. But it's, uh, old, um, all of, most of the storm drains in the city are the old, four-legged metal, and they're rusted through, and it's causing lots of problems.
Okay, so there is a list?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
On Cannon Street? They're bailed up by utilities, right now they're waiting on marks and utilities.
Okay, and that'll be done? Just wait until then, okay. Um, where are they on the, uh, on the post office, where's that project?
We are waiting on the plans from the electrical engineer.
Okay. So that's been done.
Yes.
Okay. The other thing I have is, in, in campaigning, I've had people request speed bumps, some to be removed and some to be placed. I've had people request that burn down houses on Price Street. How do we go about getting those, and then I saw a lot some time.
It just needs to be good out.
It's in the invite-in process now.
Oh, it is, okay. Is there a way, and this is just because I'm new, and I, I don't know, um, is there a way to get a list or have an ongoing list of what's being done? So that when I meet these people in Walmart, and they'll say, hey, I talked to you about, that burned out house over there, and you said you'd check on it for me. I'd like, or even to go back to them and say, this is, this is, you know, right here, it's on the list, and this is where it is in the process. I just, I don't wanna be caught on the park at some state, and say, I don't, I mean, I don't mind saying I don't know, but I'd like to have a point where I can go back to and find out some information and go back to. Um, and I know there's other, like, another source, source lot on Price Street is that abandoned house that's right there between this, yes, and I forget who's on that. What can we do about that, the grass is overgrown? No questions. I heard, I, I did ask this question some time back, and I was told that they are getting a speed bump on Price Street, is that? They're getting, how many?
I've got three.
They do have three. That's it.
Anybody else have anything we need to bring up from the council?
Uh, one vote.
Yes.
Would you please check that street light at eleven oh four, number at Highway, please?
Anything else from the council?
I do wanna ask people, I got on Lebanon, um, a constituent over there wanted that speed bump removed, because they have a construction company in the primary, and it drags across it. What, how do you go about removing, is that?
You have to vote or to remove? Is that the one, there used to be a daycare there?
Yes, and the daycare has moved out of, from the town. That's why the speed bump I was told was put there, is that correct? It's because the daycare, for me, moved out.
I think the process is that you have to vote to remove it, is that right? Are you making a motion?
Making a motion to remove the speed bump on Lebanon.
Got a motion on the floor to remove this speed bump on Lebanon, 'cause I have a second. All in favor? Roll call vote.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alfred?
Yes.
Councilmember Duschel?
Yes.
Anything else? All right, um, we're gonna move on to the, uh, department head report. Uh, C. Clark?
So the dump truck that we got for the street department, um, it's time to sell it, and, um, we can do the same program where we get another one. The options for selling it, we can take it to J and Wood in Montgomery. The lady that worked with us on it said that they are not doing as well at auction as they have in the past. So the city can put it on go deals to try to sell it that way, or Truck Works said that they would buy it back from us. So our payoff on the truck is two hundred and forty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and seven cents. Truck Works has offered us two hundred and thirty-two thousand for it. Mr. Keith and I spoke, and he thinks if we put it on go deals, we can get more than what Truck Works is offering. The first payment is due November the fifteenth, but we can't sell it until we've had it three hundred and sixty-six days. So that's not until November the nineteenth. Um, so our first payment will have to be made on it, and the first payment is thirty-three thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Do you have a replacement vehicle already?
They gave us a quote from, um, Truck Works, and it would be two hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred dollars for the new truck. And then we can do it, we can finance it the same way where we don't make a payment for thirteen months, or we can do periodic payments on it.
And you said that they, the payoff on the truck is what?
Two hundred and forty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and seven cents.
And they're offering us?
They are offering us two hundred and thirty-two thousand. So it would be that it costs the city ten thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars to be able to use the truck for a year, which is less than a thousand dollars a month.
Oh, and put it on.
Or we can put it on go deals.
I do pretty good luck.
And you can do a reserve price on go deals, and, you know, it doesn't reach the price that you will, which Keith said he felt like we might be able to get too forward for, if we put it on go deals.
Any discussion?
All I can say is we have, had good results with go deals, it'll work to try, we can always settle back to the company we got it from, if we can get more than we all tried to get.
All right, and we, we have to do something with this, when's the first payment due?
Um, November the fifteenth. Just before our next meeting.
No, we can't settle until we've had three hundred and sixty-six days.
Yeah, we can't sell it. The three hundred and sixty-six days is the federal excise tax that we don't have to pay.
All right, so, and you said the payment's thirty-three thousand, so will that drop the two thirty-two, which you owe?
They would drop the two forty-two that we have, yes.
I mean, the two forty-two. Discussion from the council. Do I have a motion to put it on go deals, try? I'll make that motion, 'cause I have a second.
I'll second it.
All in favor, roll call vote.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alfred?
Yes.
Councilmember Duschel?
Yes.
Yes.
That was all I had.
Work's got, uh, three Dan Majors.
Um, just to bring some up to speed, we have a sidewalk project going right now. We just got all of the trees on College Street cut, made anyway, all the way down to West Point Street. And it's gonna be probably Thursday morning over here getting this tree off of the fifth street behind the high school. Where they can, they can do that project. Um, we got eight, seven, eight, nine of the trees right now. And already had the G three put down, which is car and gravel and all that work's done. We're just waiting on the asphalt to get those done. We got grants for both of those. Working with A M, Alda Railroad, any of those type people. It's a process. You know, that moment.
A lot of real tape.
Yeah. We're making that way as quick as we can.
You got anything else, Keith? All right, please.
Police Department, we're down two dispatches right now. And we do have some advocates. We had two police officers to resign since last council meeting. But we're down two dispatches and two police officers.
Are you advertising for those positions? How much longer do you got on the advertising?
I'm on the street.
I'm sure. If you get a chance tomorrow and get weekly, let's, let's look at those advertisements. We can't fill them slot. Anything else? Chief, you got anything else? Uh, the library. I know I saw some water there.
I just want to congratulate you all. And I think this is a historic night for the city of Ryan. And, um, thank you for being here.
That was good, thank you. All right, recreation?
Um, we have our silver and gold football team playing in championship games in Lionel this week. We have cheer competitions again at nine and the two football games will be after lunch. And we have basketball signups going on right now until the week four Thanksgiving.
Getting a lot of people signed up?
We are.
That's good. That's real good. Um, our department, I know I saw Chief Kessler.
Looking forward to working with all of y'all tonight. We have nothing to promote. And the utility board is.
Yeah, I see that over there. Utility on that side. Uh, Chamber of Commerce, Mr. Orp.
We, um, applaud y'all for stepping up and, and, and taking, working for the city to work together to make it all better for, for all of us. The Chamber just hosted our seventeenth Daniel Follow Main Street Festival. It is the largest we've ever had in attendance. Uh, the crowd was just tremendous. I've had several people ask me why we don't charge admission charge and why we don't charge vendors. And the reason, as long as we can fund it through sponsorships, through the grants that I'm able to get, I don't want to charge. A lot of the people who are, um, that are vendors that day, some of it's their second job, some of it's their only job. And we feel like that money that they're making is going back into, they're spending that money back in our city and our county. So therefore, that money, it just kind of, it just keeps rolling on to make it better for all of us.
I agree with it. I agree with it. Anybody else? Is this, where is Ms. Roslin? Ms. Roslin?
Yeah, I don't know if it's too late for me to comment on this, but I'm a numbers person. I'm a finance major. And I just want to make you guys aware of the trust you said that you owe two. Oh, Jesus, thank you. You, you said you owe how much on it?
Two hundred and forty-two thousand.
Two forty-two. And they offered you two thirty-two? But the first payment would be thirty-three thousand, right? So you would have to make that first payment before you can even sell it.
Yes.
So you, essentially, you're paying ten thousand, you would be only paying ten thousand dollars for a year work. But if you have to pay that thirty-three thousand, you're upside down now. So you may not even get two forty. You, to make that up, you have to get at least two seventy to sell it on go. Because you're paying thirty-three thousand.
But the thirty-three is gonna take the payoff amount down.
So you, so you, do you think it's gonna cover?
I feel like we can get more for it if we sell it on go deals. So we would be, like, be in it for less because we're gonna get that money back on the back end.
You think you're gonna get the thirty-three thousand back?
Yes, because we would get, I mean, when they pay us for it, hopefully they're gonna be paying us two hundred and forty thousand dollars. So that's gonna cover the thirty-three that we spent.
I don't think she, she's gonna make that payment. We can't sell it till the nineteenth of November. So that payment's gotta be made.
Either way, we're gonna have to make that.
Either way, we're gonna make the payment.
No. Well, if you, you say either way, you would have to make the payment?
Yes. We gotta do three hundred and sixty-six days, which is the nineteenth of November. And the payment's due on the fifteenth, then.
So you, okay.
Um, anybody else? Uh, I'm gonna open this up to the floor. Anybody in the audience got anything that they need to say? Yes, I see a hint. Yes.
First of all, congratulations to each of you. Um, looking forward to see what the progress is going to be. Uh, but I have one request. I don't know if we can do it tonight. The three-minute rule. Can we amend that? Can that be amended?
I looked through the city personnel policy today, uh, thanks to Amanda. I, I don't know where that comes from. I didn't find it.
The public organizational meeting, presentation, the ordinance. Now, um, two thousand, it's probably a hit somewhere. I'm thinking, let me see.
If you could give us to the next council meeting and let us hunt that? I agree with you a hundred percent. Some of that campaign stuff, ain't no way you can say what Roslin was asking questions. Ain't no way I could answer them in three minutes. Why just give me three minutes? That would no way.
So, um, it doesn't state a time in the ordinance, but on our, um, order there that they throw out to get on the agenda, that's where it states the three minutes.
That's where it is.
It's in the Alabama law.
I, I fully understand what you're, what you're saying. Um, anybody else? Yes?
I'm with Tammy. I mean, um, congratulations. My favorite, still my girl, my, my second councilwoman. But I'm with you on this cleaning up. But you know, charging these people, that's why we got couches, uh, mattresses, everything you can name, all over the city at one of them. Because you want to charge them. And then some of those mattresses and couches come from somebody that don't even want it as well. But it's just, it's just ridiculous as what the city looks like. And then I said to you over on the Seymour Drive, I'll bet I'm sure it didn't come from the people on Seymour Drive. And it looks a mess. But then, when you can't cha, when you're charged, when somebody's charging, there you go. There we go. It's trash everywhere. So the city looks bad. But if we can work on that, I would love it.
Yes.
And I'd like to congratulate you all as well. You mentioned about speed bumps. I got into it this afternoon with a driver on Mulberry who came flying down Mulberry. They're running the stop sign at the top of Central and Mulberry. And they were flying down, there were kids on scooters and bicycles. And this guy came tearing down through the stop sign, never stopped. And he came past Park coming down the hill. And I went like this, trying to slow him down. And then he stopped by stone. That's how long it took him to stop. And he just looked back and he goes, what's your problem? And I said, slow down. There are kids here. And then he wanted to start fighting with me and I just turned my back and I said, okay, I don't want to fight. I just think there should be maybe a speed bump by Park on Mulberry. And there should be a speed bump on Piedmont above the school. Because they, I know they had, they raised the speed bump down by the school. But once they come over that speed bump, they flourish up that hill. And if, there are kids coming up every day from school. So if something could be done with speed bumps, I, I'm all in favor of that. The other thing is that I've gone out myself with a black garbage bag. I put a yellow vest on and I've gone out and picked the garbage up, starting from my house down around Central and then back along Mulberry. It would be great if I could get some help to help.
Thank you.
Didn't we have, wasn't there something that the city, maybe the orders about, about throwing out trash out the windows and all that?
Actually, approval. Let me ask, uh, Chief Dean, would, would you get, um, maybe the SRO, uh, that covers Ninety and Low to check over there around the school where he's talking about? To see, you know, what we can figure out where we might put a speed bump over there where it might be a, you know, a good idea. Uh, if you don't want to get this here. Anything else? Well, as the mayor, I want to thank all of you. Oh, yes, yes.
If you don't want the speed bumps, what you want is speed tables. People that don't care about the speed they're doing and they're driving crazy. They don't care about their front end alignment either. They roll those speed bumps like they're not anything. You need speed tables because speed tables, you, if you go over, it's just gonna lock you in space.
I, I want to thank all of you for coming tonight. Let's know, um, I'm gonna be here. And again, my door is open. We may not can fix every problem everybody's got, but we can sure listen to you when you got one. But give us a chance. We're, we're gonna try to make this, make things better. And, uh, thank all of you for coming tonight. Has anybody got anything else from the council? I don't hear anything. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
You got a motion?
Let's be adjourned.